I want to, in a special way, welcome all of you once again. For this, a small, a brief occasion or party, I could say, because wherever you see a cake, there's a party. And also to welcome all the players, the coaches, department, and also the team and people around. We are going to have a very short program regarding the regional league program that is coming. This is Lira City Council Football Club. We are going to have some brief program because we have here only three agenda. Number one is going to be prayer. And then introduction. But the main program that has gathered us here is unveiling. We're going to unveil new players on the ground. Some weeks back, we gave you a notification about the unveiling of a technical team. I mean to say coaches. And right now, we are going to do, we are going to unveil new players and a new club media officer, P R O. And also to give a farewell to our former P R O, Public Relations Officer. I'm going to give you brief program for the unveiling of a new L C C P R O 2024-2025. Our first agenda is going to be was arrival of players and other team and technical team for L C C and Excom. And then second is going to be opening prayer. Abel Ogwang is going to lead us there. And then we will have self introduction, welcome remarks from the C E O and unveiling the P R O. Then we'll have remark from the head coach and releasing squad 2024, 2025 squad that will take us through this year. Then we'll have a remark from the fans representative, a remark from our partners representative, then a speech from our guest of honor that will be with us soon. Then number ten is going to be cake cutting and farewell to our outgoing P R O. That one is going to take the person who's going to take us through his dinner. Let's start with the agenda number one. That is arrival of players and technical team. Thank you all of you for coming, our players. And then second agenda is going to be prayer. And I request Abel, your name is here. Actually, I did not tell you my name. My name is Mark Olila. I work with Voice of the Gospel Radio. And I'm going to take you through this program. We are going to see the third agenda. That is self introduction. Like I have said, that is my name. But for us, we can talk one by one. Let me start with the...
Yeah, my name is Aaron the Sportsman. I work with Voice of the Gospel.
Yes, good afternoon, members. I'm Regina Alalam, commonly known as Lady J. I work for Q F M. I do online sports reporting, that is T N D News. Right up here, I'm representing T N D. Thank you.
I'm called Richard Sonabora, but commonly known as Cabora the Golden Boy. I work for Radio A.
I would say, sorry for the interruption. But we normally say, in each and every program that we have, there is always sun and rain. So this one was rain. It was in the program. We were giving self introduction for those one who are around. And I think for those one who have not yet said a word, we can start from there.
Good afternoon.
My name is Belmas Gom. I work for Unity F M.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Kawinya Junior. I work for Voice of Lango. Thank you.
Alleluia. Felix Maris, my name. I work for Voice of the Gospel. Thank you.
Yeah, good afternoon. Joseph Okulepila is my name. I work as Radio K F M.
Good afternoon. My name is Opio Chen. I work for the Holocaust and Voice of the Gospel Radio.
Good afternoon, everyone. Abel Ogwang is my name. I work with Q F M. I'm here in two capacities as the outgoing P R O as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Dan Ogwalengwa is my name, the head coach, L C C.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. No journalists, you don't speak back to people. Is what you learnt in communication? Okay, sorry, that was a joke. I'm Christine Anyingo-Jocke. In most cases, people call me Tina O. I'm the Deputy C E O of Lira City Council Football Club. And today, I'm in the capacity of the C E O. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm called Eric Okwara. I don't know what capacity I should be in, but I'm seated in front of you at the capacity of the president. I'm representing Eric Okek. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Sugwang Ford. I am the Vice President Technical, Lira City Council Football Club. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you. Like I said earlier, our agenda, the second, third agenda was introduction and that we have just done it. We don't have much that we are going to give you, but we are here for L C C three things. We're going to have activities that will take place. And we are not expecting to delay here because of time because we have so many things that is putting us away. First of all, we have the sports journalists. Others, their time is coming, they're supposed to report back. The next agenda that we have in our program is a speech from the C E O.
I'm not used to speaking on a microphone because I have a very loud voice. Now that you're forcing me to use it, I will. Thank you. Good afternoon, once again. Good afternoon, players. Good afternoon, journalists. Good afternoon, coach. Yeah, like I said, I'm Christine Anyingo-Jocke. I'm the Deputy C E O of Lira City Council Football Club. And on my behalf and on behalf of the club, I would like to welcome you all for this very important event in the life of L C C F C. I think today marks three... Okay, it's not the exact birthday, but we are close to three. Three, we are going to the fourth year as a club. And in a special way, I want to thank our partners. These are the journalists who have always endeavored to be part of us in every journey. Your presence always amplify what we are doing as a small group of young people, as young leaders who are emerging from this community to support sports. And we always say, as L C C, we just identify and nurture talents. So thank you so much for supporting us in this course. Our dear players, we are very humbled to have you here again and to welcome you from the long break. It has been a journey which has been worthwhile. For all the new players, you have joined a home, a home for talent nurturing. And I always tell people that as L C C, we give a platform where you are able to present your talent and nurture it to great heights. But the choice always depend on you, whether you want to take it to another level or you want to remain with it at this level. But I'm happy that we have journeyed through all these three years. I've been moving without any much changes. But of course, like any other family, like any other organization, there's that glitch. And I know it has always been there. So I thank you for enduring and coming back to start the journey afresh with us again. To the Excom who are here, Vice President Technical, the president in your absenure, but with your representative, our deputy P R O, our dear P R O, who is soon leaving us as a P R O, but remaining as the founding member. We want to thank you for your support and always being there. We want to thank you for always keeping the vision alive. Without your commitment, I don't think we would still be here today. To our dear coach, we welcome you home. I remember I told you this sometimes back, but then we are starting a new season. We are starting a new journey. And I don't want to hesitate to welcome you again and say, welcome home. Players, you're not clapping. Which voice should I use? Welcome, coach! Yeah, so in a special way, I want to welcome you home. And thank you for joining the team of people who are struggling to see that we nurture talents in Lango. As you can see currently, what is happening in the national team. Every now and then, they're celebrating the win. The key names that pops out are players who are coming out from this region. That means that we have a lot of work to do to nurture more talents, to send more teams, to send more players to the national team. So that work still remains with all of us. We have a part to play. It's just like a system. So which part are we playing? As the press, as the players, as the Excom, and also other sport fraternities, other sister clubs who are not here. I know that we all have a role to play. The league is starting soon. I think our first game is on Saturday. And I want to assure you that the club is very prepared through the help and guidance of our coach, Dan, our able coach. We are very prepared. And this time round, L C C is more prepared than ever. If you have never seen Lira City Council Football Club playing to go to the next level, I think this year is the year we are talking about. So the journey is going to start so soon. And on behalf of the team, I want to assure you that we shall give all the necessary support to the players, to the technical team. But I remember saying this is a community club. So it's very open to individuals who are out there, like our partners. Some of them who were supposed to be here, but I think rain caught them somewhere else, but they're underway, like Mount Meru, who accepted to support us in this course. We, Meru Investment, sorry, Meru Investment, who accepted to journey with us is our number one sponsor. We have the likes of Tinox Farmers Hub. These are young companies who accepted also to be in this cause to nurture talents. We have the Cristo. We have Lumsi. It's also a very small company, but appreciated that we really need to wake up as a community. We have Extreme Line. We are supposed to have a boy here. We welcome you and we say thank you so much for accepting to support and nurture these talents. And above all, like I said, there is a quote that I always say that "The people of Uganda, like the people well over, are key to their own development." So today, I want to reiterate the same phrase that "The people of Lango, like the people well over, are key to their own development." So that means that we have a contribution to make. No one will come from anywhere to make sports in Lango shine. It's going to be our individual contributions. It's going to be what we cherish as sports in Lango. Lango was known for the great sportmanship. If we talk about the late John Akibua, we talk about, you know, most of those great people in the sports that we know, they all came from Lango. So it's our role now to either build it or kill the legacy that all those people left behind. Today, again, we are humbled to, of course, bring to our team a very enthusiastic person about sports. As you know, as an individual, you can't push everything. But also, as teams come in, sometimes you need to leave the stage. They always say that even the best dancer will always leave the stage. You might have seen in the agenda, we have said unveiling the new P R O. And in a special way, I want to acknowledge the contribution of our former P R O, that is none other than Abel Ogwang. You can wave to us. You have been a very great part of L C C Football Club. Our visibility was at a hundred and five percent because of your work as the P R O. And I want to tell you that that work won't be swept under the carpet. We really acknowledge that. We really appreciate your contribution. Having said that, Abel is not leaving us. It's all that he has gotten another opportunity, which is good in the growth. It's really good in the professional growth of every human being that you always leave one step and move to the next one. And it's a necessary growth. So as Abel leaves the stage, allow me present to you our new P R O, who will take over from today, from Abel. Are we clapping? Oh, we are slapping. So how about if I introduce myself and that I'm the new P R O? That is none other than Baptiste. You're welcome, Baptiste. Thank you so much. Please take your seat. And of course, I am not so good at talking about new people. I will give him opportunity to greet people and just tell us a little bit about his past experience in sports. Welcome, Baptiste, to L C C family.
The C E O of this mighty club, L C C. The club president in your absenure, but here represented. The Vice President, the head coach, our dear players, the media team here in. I greet all of you in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. I am John Baptiste Zupua, as mentioned. I don't know whether all those words she used on me, I really deserve them. But all I can say is, we are here to develop sports. And as a passionate sportsman, I want to use only three minutes to say something briefly. She requested me to say something about myself, but I think that is so, so hard for me. You know, you can't speak much about yourself. But the truth is, I am John Baptiste Zupua, a professional football communicator. I'm as well a professional journalist. So I'm entering into something that I sat in a class and I was taught also how to conduct it. And I am glad that I'm having this opportunity to serve in this mighty club. I, of course, stand before you people here with a great pride and excitement as a new Public Relations Officer for this beloved football club. I know this is a club with a great history, four years down the road, but it has something that it is going to be very, very hard for some of these clubs to emulate. Playing for one full season unbeaten is something that stands so, so loud for the team. And that is why I'm saying it is a club with such a rich history and passionate followings. People who follow this club are very, very much passionate. That is why, as I come to work with the team, I really feel I am going to work with people who are passionate about football and they are going to help develop the team. As we embark on this journey, my primary goal, as you all know, will be to enhance on our communication strategies and also to promote credible stories about the team. As you know, each and every team has their own players. I want to tell you that the team here assembled by the coach are a group of players who are very, very much skillful. And I believe through my work, you will be able to know each of them one by one. I promise you that. As we kick off the new season, I only ask of you to rally behind me, the players, the fans, and the staff alike. Let's show to the world that this is a team or this is a football club that stands for resilience, teamwork, and unwavering passion for the game of football. Those are the only few things I request of you that as we approach the new season, we should be able to put our hands together and develop this club and push it to greater heights. Thank you so much. I say this for God and my country.
Wow, that's amazing. And welcome, once again, home. Yeah, with that said, I don't want to add many more words. But in a special way, I want to thank Lango College, who has been our greatest allies. First of all, they gave us the field where we play from. Secondly, whenever we reach out to them, they are always there to say, here, look, you have a place to sit, you have a shelter where you can sit. So I don't want to forget Lango College. I want to thank them in their absenure for always being a good father to us. Streamline, I would request you to come a little bit here. Yeah? No? Okay. Yeah, I think with that, I want to wish us the very best. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give a hand clap for that. And also, in a special way, I want to welcome the fifth agenda. That is a remark from the head coach.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody who is inside here. This is my second time to attend such kind of function. Oh, today is not my day. It was P R O. I hope today is your day. For us, I'm just calling upon all our supporters, all the departments. We talk about the media. We talk about our members here. We talk about the players. Let's work together as a team. I hope this year is going to be a great year for us. I believe in these young boys. We are here to promote them and we are here to take this team to another level. So as coaches, we don't have much. We don't speak football, but we coach football. Okay? So every time we work, we work there. But here, we live for officials here and then our fans. People who talk most is our fans. But I welcome you. This season is going to be a very difficult season for every cup. And we are prepared. We are serious on Saturday. Come and watch the game. We are starting on Saturday. I'm assuring you guys, we are going to handle game, every game as a game, as a final. So I wish everybody a good stay and a happy stay in L C C. Or to my players, at least I'm giving this information that before, if you have not been performing to your hundred percent, let's do it this season. Give your best. These people, you heard from them, they are working to make sure everything you need, you will get it. Now, it means we have what? We have to pay them back. If they are giving us, let's give them the results. And we are not going to plan a pressure. This is a young team. They know what they are going to do. Pressure is not going to be there in our team today. This season, we are going to handle very well, President. I wish you well. God bless you.
Like the coach said, I request him now to officially give us the squad 2024-2025, players who are going to participate as we give out their names. They will match in.
Thank you so much, moderator. I am glad to stand before you once again. The way the C E O said, I have been given this opportunity to present the players that we have for this season 2024-2025. We have three categories of players, but all summarized into two. The new players or players whom we have brought them and the rule on transfer windows. And then we also have players who are once with the team or who were there last season. And then also, we have some other one. There is this category here. My learned team of journalists here, they know what we call double licensing system. You also have players under that system and they are here and we are going to see them. I am going to read their names one by one and they will be able to come here and you will be able to see them, see their faces. And I request the players who are down there to be ready. We are having Filimon Oye. Filimon Oye is our goalkeeper. That's Filimon. Filimon, I beg you, you have to sit the other side. We are having Samuel Moses Okulu. He pretty well is our defender. That's Moses Okulu. We are having Daniel Rooney Opio. Thank you so much, Daniel Rooney. Those are players whom we had them last season. They have decided to renew their contracts and continue with us. That clearly tells how much they love the team or they love the club. We are having Solomon Omery. We are having um Solomon Omery. Uh, Solomon, Moshe Okam, thank you for uh accepting to remain in the team. He's a midfielder. We are having Daniel Uchero. Daniel Uchero. He is a defender. Thank you so much, Daniel. We are having one player who is not here, Awanya Ambrose, commonly known as Kinga. You know him so much, he, he, you know him pretty well, he's not here with us. We're having Ronald Okelo. Ronald has moved. Okay, Ronald is also not here with us. Uh, we are having Emmanuel Okeng, he's a forward. Thank you so much, Emmanuel. We also having Brian Odon. Not with us today, he's at school. Uh, he's a university student. Emma as well is a university student, but he has purpose to be here with us. We are having Moses Okulu Messi. Messi is also not. Um, we are having Daniel Ochen, Dante. Thank you so much, Dante. Uh, we are also having Patrick Alain, who is also not uh here with us. Uh, the other common name is, um, I'm forgetting. There is this common name here for Alain Patrick, Abouha. The scholar Abouha is not there with us, but he is part of the team. Um, we are having Derek Otuhe. Derek Otuhe is also not with us. He's a university student, he's at school. We are having uh our Ebo captain, Emmanuel Ayew. He served as a captain last season. We are yet waiting for what the coach will do. That one is, it is discretion. We are waiting for the coach to appoint the captain, but he served as pretty well last season as the captain. Um, we are having Pedro Okot. Pedro Kott is also a student, he's not here with us today, but he is part of uh the team. Uh, those are some of the players, the senior players we had last season and they have decided as well to uh continue with us this very season. Uh, we have some of the new players with the help of the CEO and the technical advice uh from the coach. We have some of the players that we are able to bring them to the team, just like the way our CEO said that this is a teamwork, you can't do alone. We are able to had um Mr. Emmanuel Olwach. The name is Zoom, right? The common name is Zoom, is from Rampara Bulls Football Club. Uh, we also have Shafik Shaban. For those who know him pretty well, he featured for Hairlight F C last season. Uh, we also have Dickens Okir, AKA Diarra. He featured for Young Elephants last season, but this time around is coming to future for the club. It is unfortunate that he has some issues, he's not yet here with us, but he is part of the team. We are having Ayew Emmanuel. Ayew Emmanuel was brought from Asofisal Football Club. You must welcome to the mighty L C C F C, Emmanuel. We are having Abdallah Issam. He's an amateur player, just so you can see him. Um, we are also having Joshua Epela. Epela Joshua is unattached. Joshua Epela is not here with us today, but he is part of the team. We also having Opio Dante from U P D F. Opio Dante from U P D F, you're welcome to the team, Dante. Uh, those who know Zimi, he featured for Northern Gateway the previous season, the other season. He went to U P D F, but he's back to move the team to big league. Um, we are having Jacob Olanya. Jacob Olanya was brought from Rojkeer Football Club. Thank you so much for joining the team. And then we are having Opima Joshua. You must welcome to uh the team. We are having one player, we mentioned his name, but he had moved outside. That is Odongo, Odongo Ronalds. That is his best name, is called Alar. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Alar. Uh, now we have this set of players. We have this set of players who are under double licensing. They are playing with the Black Power's Football Club. We also want to thank them for giving us those players. Had it not been because of their good heart, we would not be having them. Now these players are Akol Eric. Eric is not here with us. Those, these players are with the team, are training, but they are always with us and they will be with us for match days or on match days. We are having uh Andrea. He joined Black Power. Listen, how dear are Galan fans. These are the set of players that we shall be using them for this very season twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. Thank you so much for um making time to come and see our players. Just like I said, they need your support as well. Also want to thank the players for accepting to join the team, for those who joined newly and then for those who are there at the club. We thank you so much for accepting to renew uh your contracts. We say, may God bless you so much. Uh, moderator, I think I am done with that task. Um.
May we clap our hands again? Uh, for the, for the work uh our new P R O is doing. Uh, he has already started showing us that he's capable, he's going to lead us and take us.
I'm sorry for getting back again. Um, I also want to say, these players, you see them, you're also going to witness their potentials. Just few minutes from now, we shall be having a friendly game with a team uh from uh Lira District, that's a Borwood Football Club. We are going to have them, they're already in the pitch. Uh, you're going to witness, our fans, please, you will be able to witness uh their potentials from the pitch. I've seen some of the fans now starting to move there, that is what they like so much. Thank you so much.
Yeah, uh, like I was saying, we are going to be uh moving to another uh agenda. But with us, we are going to have the CEO of Northern Region, who is going to be our guest of honor for tonight uh for the function, for the program that is ongoing. Uh, we are going to have a, a speech, a brief speech from the captain. From the, I could say the captain because uh the new season is just underway and we have to hear from uh the captain.
The ex-colon members, our, their sponsors, the media fraternity and players. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here by your names, Ayew Emmanuel Yeko. Uh, as you have heard, I'm, I'm the club captain, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-three, I mean twenty twenty, twenty-five. I would like to welcome our new players. You're welcome to the team, feel at home. Also, I'd like to welcome our coach. You're welcome to the team. As you have heard, this season, we are determined to go to the next level. And I believe in our team, I believe in everyone which, who are with us in this season. I believe we're going to go to the next level. As you have heard, the coach said, we are going to witness the potential of our team in the next few minutes, so I would like to be brief. I would thank everyone who is around. Sorry, I was forgetting, I would also want to welcome our new P R O. You're welcome to the club. So thank you, everyone. See you at the pitch.
All right, thank you uh for the short uh word that you have given. Let me now welcome the, the fans representative uh to give a, a word.
Thank you. All protocol observed, the players, good evening. My name is Gombelmos. I am here at the capacity of the fans representative. I speak for the greatest number of your fanbase, that is Lao, because I'm the P R O for Lao Province. The coach and the management team, the technical team and the players. Our work as the fans is just very simple, is to come and give you support. But I also want to give you a disclaimer that this community of ours, the kind of community that so much love football when we are winning. And if you are not winning, they will disappear. It is very hard to convince them to come back to the pitch when we are not performing. Management is doing all that it takes to make your lives easy. So I'm also appealing to you, the players and the technical team, you make our work also easier. It's very hard to shout when you're ten goals down, oh, four, three goals. But if you are winning, we shall shout, we shall give you morale, we shall even collect money. I want to pledge to you, the players, that the current drum management that has been instituted is so much looking at the local talents that are down here. You know your colleagues who are already playing in some big clubs, how hard it is for their clubs to release them sometimes and also uh to finance them. Financially, they have also become a burden to the province. So if you perform well, that everyone else can see that L C C players are doing something very good. There will be no justification of us summoning those players when we know you're here and you are supposed to get such big platforms, so that you also expose yourself to the world. And if something happens to you, positively good and you also go like so many through the drum have exploded to the world. So as the fans, we pledge your support, we shall always come. And I don't know if there will be some gate collection somehow, somewhere. If it's going to be there, we shall start talking about it. So that when people come to uh the Rhino Park, as it is called, they know they're supposed to bring something for you. Thank you so much. I don't have much to say. Uh, we meet at the, in the pitch. Thank you.
Let's clap our hand to uh welcome a beautiful speech from our fans representative. I'm saying also thank you. I want, I, I want you, I want to unveil to you the slogan of the club. Uh, we always use Layer Gear, as you can see. Uh, that is the slogan of L C C. If you mention Layer Gear, even if you don't listen, L C C, it is enough. We can also thank the management for that, for choosing the beautiful name. I want to welcome uh the club deputy vice president, actually the vice president, a technical, uh to just uh give a word. And they're going to use few minutes because we are almost running late. And then we will have uh a speech from the president and the guest of honor. Then we'll cut the cake. Quentin will lead us in cutting the cake, I'm sure.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, in your different capacities, but in a more special way, I would like to acknowledge the presence of the media team and thank you for turning up for this invitation. Uh, the captain and the team, much has been done with the football. It is only football when it is played. That is the most unfortunate part of football. It is only played. The rest are history, the rest are opinions people are entitled to. This season, like the CEO has already put it, we are determined and we want to start all over again. Next, last season whereby we finished, I think in third position. This season, the captain has said, we are aiming for the next level. The next level we are talking about, it is to go and battled with the other clubs of the big league. We have faith in this, the team that we have assembled in place are strong enough to take this club to the next level. For the last three years that the club existed, we learnt a lot and we learnt a lot from our mistakes. And we hope this time round, we are able to avoid some of those minor mistakes that led us into not topping the table and going for the playoff and finally going for the what? For the big league. So this time round, it is the team that is ready for all the challenges. To the media team, we cannot thank you enough, you have been part and parcel of our journey. In one way or the other, we might have not done something in the right way. Accept our apology. On behalf of the management, mistakes happen. This time round, we are good to go while trying as much as possible to avoid the mistakes. I cannot proceed that much, having seen the regional CEO already in the house. I thank so much for honoring this invitation, you're most welcome, sir. Thank you for coming. Without wasting much time, I bring the greetings of uh a good number of the executives who are not here, like Amza Ogole, Vice President Administration. He's also involved in cultural uh issues, so he's in the court. He could not be with us here. I, I cannot see Martin, Martin is a student at Abilino Technical College. He could arrive here maybe during time for the match and all other ex-colon members that are not here, but they are here with us in spirit. Our dear CEO. I want to thank you without acknowledging your great support for this club. This is one of your brainchild. The club is here, it, where it is because of your technical advice. And we have learned to work with you, we have learned to read you, we have learned to take your directions or your directives on how to run the club. So today we stand here not to claim that we are the most senior citizens in running football club. So today we stand here not to claim that we are the most senior citizens in running football club, but we are simply humble enthusiastic people in football. I want to listen and I want to be guided. With that, it is what makes us who we are. When we talk about Layer Gear, we picked it from the old slogan of Laon, that Layer Gear Mual. So we simply removed Ginnamual, Akedungdodongkerenagairkeken. So man, Ngawanoberu, Pogareyoremelwen, Ogareyoremaadilu. So coach, Upujitutwal, Meye joining wa? Ichi, Chiyoapolobeye, Chiunwalotinapol, Ikopadilu. Obaneno tala wa tekelaway komi, Dometopoyitutwal meye metichkewa. Piman, Wano binu, Making sure ni, Djamiducha meyiniti mitachalo, Achalo coach. Wano binu timo, Tichinthebergenka, Asa etekonkapason, Apoyitutwal uno.
Let's to give, actually, we are going to do some small photo shoot from the management and the players, and then they will take their seat. I request led by Quintina. I also request the CEO. So I would now request the CEO to just come and give a word. Or to talk when all these people are standing, even the CEO. Let's give one clap to welcome. Thank you. But before he says something, I want to address him that we are, we have unveiled a new PRO in the name of Baptiste. And also to release the, the former PRO. And also, they are giving to us in full details the new players who have, who have just joined us and so many people, thank you.
Thank you so much. Leader of City Council Football Club for inviting me for this very important occasion. I want to acknowledge the entire leadership for the great work doing and then also the club technical people, not forgetting the most gallant one, the players. First of all, I, football is very dynamic. Today, football we are playing is more of the kitchen work than the one on the field of play. And there are so many regulations that are coming in football. And it will be really very nice to see leader, leader City Council Football Club being a model club that when the regulation is passed, they are the one that, they are the first club to do the right thing. So going forward, like I've said, football is more of kitchen work than on field. When you see the on-field, football is not nice, just know there's a problem in the kitchen. And this is really part of the kitchen work we are doing, this really stepped in the right direction. And I want to congratulate you. Very few clubs thinks about doing such, such an event, unveiling players and such very important occasion for the football club. And happy that City Council is doing the right thing and I'm, I hope to see them a better club in the near future. Then, and also, the other thing I want to only challenge us is that so many regulations are coming in football today. We have been training people, clubs on the new system that is called the Competition Management System that shall be using to run competition in the next edition of the Regional League. So I'm also happy that the club at least sent a participant to go and undergo the, the training. So when this system comes, let's comply, let's be a role model club. Let's show to the other clubs who are not within the city that we are a model club. We are regulation compliant. So that at any day, we are, every player want to play for City Council. When a City Council name is mentioned, let every player feel the pride of playing for this model club you guys are building. I want to conclude by saying that the entire management, let's do the technical work, sorry, let's do the governance work and let give the technical work, give the technical people the liberty to do their work. Let's not interfere with the technical work from the governance wing. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I also want to welcome in a special way a mother who has been with us from day one of LCC. Up to now, she's still with us. I want to welcome her, regardless of clap our hand to welcome. She will introduce herself and you guys will take a seat.
Thank you so much. My name is Stella Okek. I'm the wife to President. Thank you so much.
You clap your hand because you are now seeing the first lady here. Thank you, you guys can take a seat. Meanwhile, Tina will remain standing, will lead us into this. Tina and the president and the first lady.
Okay, thank you so much. In only two minutes, we have been seeing the representative of the president here. And I think he has just something small to person before we, eh, person, to say before we cut our cake. Then, now, as a norm in Lera City Council Football Club, we always appreciate the work that our people have sacrificed to do. So today, like we said, we are sending our PRO to a new club. We want him to have a very humble beginning, we want him to wish him, like we want to wish him the very best. So I have two gifts here. One is to usher in our new PRO, kindly clap for him. Who gets that? And the second one is to send away the other one, so that it stops obstructing him from doing his work. But only to support him as he carries on with this work. So what we shall do, I will give this to the mama of the club. You will give this, the white one, you know? We are pure-hearted as LCC Football Club. So the one who is going to show him our love. Then the blue one, as you know, we are the Blues. As you can see, we have painted the room blue. You'll give it to our incoming PRO. Or you can choose to give this to him and he hands it over to him. I, whatever you choose to do, please. So thank you so much, thank you, thank you Abel for being a great PRO at Lera City Council Football Club. Continue to shine wherever you're going. And thank you Baptiste for joining the mighty Blues. Please come and paint that city blue, paint the world blue. Over to you mommy. Thank you for the hard work. Spining and spreading our name. Want to say what?
I really don't know where to start from. It has been a long journey with the Lera City Council Football Club. I've been telling people that I have not left LCC and I will never leave LCC. I will die, I LCC die hard. I'm leaving today, I just leaving the position of the PRO. But I'm not leaving Lera City Council Football Club. And I'm not going for good. I'm just going to gain more experience because I'm a fond member of Lera City Council Football Club and I will die one of them. The whole of my family, my parents, my children, my wife, the Lera City Council Football Club. I have a four-year-old kid who is already in an academy and I would wish to see him playing for Lera City Council Football Club. By then, I believe I'll be sitting on a pavilion, not standing under a mango tree. So I'm just wishing Baptiste all the best, I will give you all the necessary support you need. And I'm glad that you're one person that I recommended. And I really appreciate the club and the CEO because he had to seek my guidance, my support. Because it was like, since you are leaving, you cannot just let us be like that, kindly guide between A, B, C, D. Who do you think can help us do better? And I believe what I've been doing, Baptiste can even do better. And I still promise to give LCC all the needed mileage on social media, on registration, I have a program on QFM, an online tier show. Actually, it's like a TV show, though it's still on YouTube. I will always try my level best to market Lera City Council Football Club. I thank the management, the fans, the players that I've worked with for three years. I know we are going to continue working, though I'm also overtaken by so many engagements at the moment. I cannot be doing much as I used to, but I will always be giving you all the needed assistance. May God bless us all. Baptiste, you shall be working. Wishing you all the best at Lera City Council Football Club. You are the Layer Gear.
Thank you so much Abel. Our time is not on our side because we have to get to the pitch. So I am welcoming you back, please gentlemen, come back. This cake is specifically for the two of you. But also, I'm welcoming our captain to come on board. Dear coach, please come. And the cake is beautifully written. LCC FC welcomes Baptiste and 2024-2025 squad. Down it is written, LCC FC wishes Abel the very best. So please, help us hold that knife, Abel. How are we holding this knife anyways? Please? Papa, please, come and touch this. Where is, eh, yeah? Mommy. So in account of
It's as LCC FC, in account of 100, then we shall cut this cake. 199, 2, 1, 0.